She wasn't gonna be able to make it. It's not a high car. It's usually.
Sure, you put me in.
Which was postponed due to good old New England, the snow. So, the first part of our meeting is we're gonna handle administrative boardwork and the second part of the meeting, we all hear both new plans and there's a public hearing, we'll have workshops and conceptual discussions after the new plans. I'm gonna appoint Dana to vote for Chris, who is away, traveling, and appoint Lisa to vote for Mary, who is absent, and also John is absent, traveling, Scott is also absent, both with their businesses. So, we have a total of eight voting members in a quorum. So, I'd like to recognize that we have Libby, who is taking our notes now, since Kathy has passed on to bigger and better things at BAE Systems, and welcome.
Thank you.
Libby will be attending the meetings and Jay Trotter from our department will be assisting her with the minutes, and the two of them will be coordinating on all the communication going back and forth between the board and staff, so.
Okay.
Expect to hear from both of them.
Yes. First thing we'll do is administrative boardwork, and we have two plans to sign.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this was a plan for Home Depot USA, was conditionally approved back on October 6, 2010, for an amendment to the approved site plan to indicate additional seasonal outdoor display areas and cart corrals on the parcel located at forty-one Nashville Road, MAP seven, lot one nineteen. Staff can report that conditions of approval have been met and recommend signature of the plan.
Okay.
Make a motion to the Chairman and Secretary to sign the plans?
Second.
Okay, motion and second to sign the Home Depot Amendment Site Plan in discussion by the board. Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extinctions, chair was affirmative. There's no coffee, though, Nate. No coffee.
M and Ms.
I haven't left the board yet.
You're gonna have a permanent supply of M and Ms after, in your retirement?
Try it.
Okay, so, okay, those plans will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight. Don't leave too early, Chuck.
No.
Okay, Stony Field Expansion Site Plan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this was a plan that was conditionally approved back on September 1, 2010. It was a request of Stony Field Farms for a site plan to construct sixty-two thousand nineteen hundreds, or, excuse me, sixty-two thousand nineteen square feet of building additions, which included a battery charging addition, incubator, and a packaging space at Ten Burton Drive, located at MAP fourteen, lot forty-four dash thirteen. Staff can report that conditions of approval have been met and recommend signature of the plan.
Mr. Chairman, move the plans be signed by the Chairman and Secretary?
Second.
Okay, motion by Dana, second by Rick, for the Chair Secretary to sign the Stony Field Expansion Site Plan in discussion by the board. Sign none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extinctions, chair was affirmative, and the Stony Field Expansion Site Plan will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight. We have an extension request from Vineyards at Hillside Early Housing Site Plan.
And subdivision.
And, okay, that, the two go together.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet, find a letter from Michael Lerman, the General Manager of Hillside Senior Housing. They're requesting an additional one-year extension on the final approval for the Vineyard Hillside Site Plan and Subdivision. Their request is due to the current state of the real estate financing market, which has precluded the builder from obtaining construction financing. The one-year extension, if granted, would expire on March 7th of 2012, given that no ordinances and regulations have changed that would impact this project. Staff is supportive of the request.
Okay, I think they were here about a year ago, also, with the same request.
This is the third extension.
Yep, conditions haven't, economic conditions really haven't changed an awful lot, so. I'll take a motion to.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have a motion to request a one-year extension from Hillside Senior Housing LLC to.
March 7th.
March 7th of 2012. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let's see. Who's gonna make the motion?
I already do.
Oh, Dana, okay, Dana made the motion, Rick did the second. Okay, I was just, I think they got the date wrong on the letter, but. Any discussion by the board? Sign none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extinctions, chair was affirmative, and the extension has been extended to one year for Vineyards at Hillside Early Housing. Regional impact determinations.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet, find a memo dated tonight. There is one project which we need a regional impact determination on. This is for the Freezer Warehouse Project, which was a site plan for an eighty-two thousand square foot warehouse and office addition. Staff can report that does not meet the guidelines of regional impact as established by the Southern Hampshire Planning Commission, and we recommend that it is found not to be a regional impact.
All set, Dana?
Yep.
Okay.
So moved.
Dana moves, Rick seconds, the, there is no regional impact from Leonardary Freezer Warehouse, tax MAP fifteen, lots one twenty-four and twenty-two. Any discussion by the board? Sign none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extinctions, chair was affirmative, and the determination has been approved of Leonardary Freezer Warehouse is not a regional impact. One Commercial Lane, limited car sales.
Chairman, members of the board, in your packet, you'll find a letter from Jeff Viens of Jeff's Lex Toy LLC. They're currently a tenant at One Commercial Lane. They have approached the building department about allowing for a dealer license to sell a limit of three cars for sale, basically via internet sales and telephone contact that would not be general public going to and from the site. Because this is something that Richard considered to be a change of use, he requested we bring this to the board. You'll also find in the packet some aerial photography of the site. This is at the corner of Commercial Lane and Route 28, heading towards Dairy Town Line, right next to the Pete Bog. And the last couple of pictures I've pulled off of here are Google Street View images. Let me zoom in, let's hope it's a little bit clearer. This is the view through the vegetation of the site from Rockingham Road. Again, it's very well vegetated with the existing vegetation. And then the second image, this is the lot itself from the driveway at Commercial Lane. The pictures are probably a little clearer in your packet itself. The site does have sufficient parking, given the existing tenants on the site. There are no proposed changes to building signage or anything other than reserving three of the spaces for parking, and the owner of the property has indicated that he will strictly enforce that no more than three vehicles for sale be allowed on the site. The request from the Building Division is whether or not the board is comfortable with this to handle, be handled administratively by the staff, or if you'd like to have a public hearing for a site plan for this change.
What's the building being currently used for?
It's. It's an auto repair facility.
Okay.
Yeah, this is right across from.
Atlas Fireworks.
Atlas Fireworks, yeah.
So, it has to be a C2 zone?
It is.
So, that's the most intensive of commercial zoning.
I'm pretty familiar with this building and drive by there several times a day. It's really not something people look at from the street. It's tucked down, and I can't imagine that having three cars for sale there would be any kind of public problem at all.
Yeah, seems, from what it is, it's not, doesn't really intensify the commercial usage of it, so.
Atlas Fireworks has seasonal intensity much, much beyond what they would do even if they had twenty cars for sale, but if you're asking for three, it seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah. Is the board comfortable handling this administratively?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yep. The board's comfortable with the staff handling it administratively?
I will let Richard know, and we'll let the applicant know, thank you.
Approval signing of minutes of January 26, and what I need a motion is to approve the minutes of January 26, 2011.
So moved.
Okay, move by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Chuck. My left ear is better, Rick, so. Any discussion on the minutes? Sign none. All those in favor of the passage of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extinctions?
Stained.
Laura abstains, and Dana abstains, and they were not present. And minutes are approved. Make a sign, Chuck. Okay, discussions with town staff. You have anything, John?
Nothing.
Tim?
Just to let the board know that Monday night, the council did hold the first reading for the rezoning for the Freezer Warehouse Project, and the public hearing for that has been set for March 7th for the rezoning from C2 P O D to Industrial One. They are, have also submitted, as we mentioned, during the regional impact determinations, their site plan has been submitted, review has begun, and we're hopeful to get the rezoning accomplished and get this project off and running as quickly as we possibly can.
Okay, anything else?
Outside of that, we already did the introductions of Libby, so I think I'm good for tonight.
Okay, anything from the board? Nope, we'll get right to our business.
Do you want to handle continuances first?
Pardon?
Do you want to handle continuances first?
Yes, yeah. RHP Investments LLC, this is a design review meeting for a site plan for a change of use. This is the former fire station, and they want to convert to office storage use. They've asked for a change.
Just to update the board, this was originally submitted as a formal application. We had been prepared to discuss, the applicant did withdraw this back to design review, but requested a meeting with the board to talk about the process. We'll hold off on that discussion until March 2nd. I did get an email from Elmer Pease, the property manager for the project. He has had surgery last week. He was gonna need to continue if the meeting was held last week. He's still unable to make it, he's not ready to be up and about, so he's requested continuance. The next available date that would work for this would be the March 2nd meeting.
Okay, we need a motion on that?
We do need a motion on this, and this would be, because this was noticed as a, as a formal application, it's now considered a design review, which requires that notice, so we would still need the continuance with a vote and notice that this is the only public notice.
So, it's a continuation of the application acceptance at a public hearing?
That's actually a continuation of the design review meeting at this point.
Okay, okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, motion by Dana, second by Rick, for continuing the RHP Investments LLC, TaxMAP six, lot thirty-three A, Design Review Meeting to March 2nd of 2011. Any discussion? Sign none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extinctions, chair was affirmative, and for anyone here for the RHP Investments LLC, the old fire station design review meeting, your official notice is that this meeting is continued to March 2nd, 2011, 7:00 PM, right here in Town Hall. And that's your only, only notice?
The second continuance request is for the Beal Revocable Trust Omni Point Project. In your packet, there's a letter from Stephen Grill, attorney from Divine Millimet. Staff did have a meeting with Mr. Grill back in January. They are continuing to work on the outstanding engineering comments, and they have requested a continuance to the planning board's March 9th meeting, so that they can resolve those issues and meet the deadline of next Thursday for submission of plans.
Okay, did we do that at the 26th meeting?
It was originally continued, the 26th meeting to tonight, correct?
Okay, okay, so.
Actually, no, I take that back, it was December, they continued for two months. Their initial continuance was a two-month continuance.
Okay, so we need to continue this till March, March 9th, then?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Dana, second by Rick, to continue the Beal Revocable Trust Omni Point Communication TaxMAP twelve, lot thirty-four, to March 9th, 2011, 7:00 PM, right here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extinctions, chair was affirmative, and the official notice for Beal Revocable Trust Omni Point Communications that was to be heard tonight is continued to March 9th, 7:00 PM, right here. This is your only official notice. We'll see you on March 9th. Okay, going back, new plans.
Other thing you may want to just mention is.
Oh, yes.
The Woodmont.
Woodmont Workshop that was originally scheduled for February 9th is postponed to March 9th. That was because of the snowstorm last week, pushing last week's agenda into this week's agenda. It was probably wiser to dedicate most of March 9th meeting to Woodmont Conceptual Discussion Workshop. Okay, we'll go back up to new plans. We have Forty Butrick Road LLC, which is the Elliott Medical Offices, TaxMAP six, lot seventy-three. It's a public hearing for waiver to section 6.01(c) of the site plan regulations to allow for a certificate of occupancy prior to the completion of a wearing course of pavement.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your packet, you'll find a memo from John and I, a little bit of background. As you recall, this project was originally approved by the board back in 2006 in three phases. The first two phases are complete, and Phase Three is complete with the exception of the wearing course of pavement. In an effort to obtain their occupancy permit this week, the applicant is requesting the board consider the waiver for allowing the CO without the final wearing course of pavement. This is a waiver that had been granted for Phase One of the project back when it was originally constructed. Again, they're requesting that waiver to section 601(c), because our regulations require all site improvements to be completed prior to a CO. They need the waiver in order to allow for this to take place. Our recommendation, as you know, we've stated before, these requests are rare, since the adoption of the revised regulations in 2001. By our count, we've only had four such requests in the past nine years. The requirement for improvements being constructed and completed is an important part of our approval and construction review process, and has virtually eliminated incomplete site improvements and greatly reduced our issues in enforcement on the completion of improvements for approved site plans. Elliott has posted a financial guarantee to ensure that the paving is completed as required by the plan, when weather allows, and again, as I mentioned, the board has previously granted a waiver for this particular project for the first phase, so based on the information we have available, we are recommending granting of the waiver to allow for the CO prior to the wearing course of pavement.
Pretty hard to get asphalt to stick to snow.
Yeah. If that's not a huge shovel, we'll go find a savings by five hundred miles.
Board have any questions? If, if not, I'll take.
I had a couple of questions.
Okay, certainly, then.
Are you gonna stripe the lot at all? In the meantime, I'm just curious about public safety, making sure there's no detriment to public safety.
It is temporarily striped.
It is striped?
Lynn, that's, that's a requirement.
Okay.
If they can, if they can get the waiver from you people, we'll work with them and say, now, you know, the weather's here, temporarily stripe it, but you need permission from the planning board to, for the waiver.
Okay.
Any other questions?
It is a public hearing, so you do need to go to the public.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, thank you. I was just gonna double check. Anyone from the public, or any butters that have any questions, comments, concerns in regards to the completion of the wearing course not being put down until we get better weather? Sign none, back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we grant the waiver from Forty Butrick Road, dated February 9th, 2010.
Based on the letter from the applicant from January 14th and staff recommendation?
Yep.
Okay, motion by Dana, second by Rick.
Thank you, Tim.
Sign no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extinctions, chair was affirmative, and.
Thank you.
You can operate.
Thank you. As a matter of fact, ribbon cutting is tomorrow evening, they start seeing patients on Friday, so, place is amazing.
That's pretty good, no, no, no first takers on tomorrow night.
No, they showed me the, apparently, if you do get the opportunity, the core of that facility is the linear accelerator machine for cancer treatments.
Yes.
Just the high-energy physics experiments that are going on in human body are just amazing. Four-foot thick, four-foot thick concrete walls, and everybody else stays outside, outside of them.
You could do close to them, that equipment can wipe your credit cards, anything clean, so.
Wipes a lot of things clean.
You know, a lot of clothes are falling here.
Okay, new plans of, we're, we've got that done. We have another public hearing, which is for growth management ordinance. This is a determination of growth sustainability public hearing, and we do this every year by our own ordinance, and it always occurs the same time. The reason that we do have a growth management ordinance is to really control growth, but I think the last three years, anyway, the economy has controlled the growth, so, but we do our exercise, anyway. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In the packet, you'll find the specific memorandum dated tonight with all of the requirements and the backup information. I do have a brief presentation just to go over the requirements. How this works, the requirements of this are spelled out in section 1.4 of our zoning ordinance. The board also needs to make a determination based on the 1998 ordinance, which is the former section 1304. By ordinance, this determination has to be made by March 1st every year. Our current ordinance requires that two of our three criteria be met in order to declare unsustainable growth and limit building permits, and the 1998 ordinance requires all three criteria to be met in order to declare unsustainable growth. What are the criteria? First is that the present year number of building permits authorized by the building department exceeds the average rate of authorizations over the preceding six years. The second is that the percentage increase in housing units over the preceding calendar year equal to or greater than the rate of increase for units in this preceding year summed across our six abutting municipalities of Auburn, Dairy, Hudson, Litchfield, Manchester, and Wyndham. The third criteria has three parts, that's being that the number of dwelling units, authorizations, whose projected demands can be adequately serviced by the facilities at a prudent level of fiscal strain, essentially looking at school enrollment versus school capacity, any strain on our public facilities, and the percentage of our total budget appropriations made up of capital improvements. For this year's review, first criteria, the six-year average analysis. The six-year average is currently eighty-one permits. In 2010, Leonardary authorized twenty-four, twenty-four being less than eighty-one. That condition is not met, and since the first condition was not met, we will not meet the criteria from the 1998 GMO, so the remainder of the analysis will focus on the current GMO. The second criteria is the local versus the region. Last year, our number of housing units increased by point two-eight-one-two percent. In the abutting municipalities, they grew by point four-five-six-seven percent. Again, because that is less than the regional growth, that condition is not met, and for the first time since I've been doing this, I can stop my review right there. Because two of the three criteria, conditions have not been met, we will not meet the conditions for the current GMO, so there is no further analysis of the remaining criteria necessary, which saved me a ton of time. Given that two of the three criteria of our current GMO are not met, and three of the three criteria in the 98 GMO are not met, the staff recommendation is that the planning board find that Leonardary is in a period of sustainable growth and that there be no permit cap on the number of building permit issues this year, and that this decision will end on December 31st of 2011. Glad to answer any questions the board has, but the analysis, thankfully, was relatively simple for the first time in a while.
Yeah, this is, this is the fourth year, right, Tim?
The last time we were in unsustainable growth, I believe, was '06.
Yep, that's when the housing market peaked, I think.
I go back to my, my notes here.
Remember, it was. Yeah, it'd be the.
It was 2006 was our last period of unsustainable growth.
Any questions from the board?
Not so much on the determination, but, you know, looking in the future, if Woodmont starts moving forward with their somewhat aggressive plans to build houses and pull permits, is that, could that affect, you know, the rest of the town or the ability to pull permits in the rest of the town? And, you know, I know it's a long way away, but we may just want to, I don't know, revisit the ordinance, or.
I don't think it's a matter of revisiting the ordinance as much as it is the structure of how you set up the PUD master plan in terms of how that phasing would take place, because, I'll be honest with you, the, the more you tinker with the GMO, the more likelihood you are of being challenged and having it thrown out.
Yeah.
And ours is, is ironclad as there are in the state, and I'm extremely comfortable with the way we do things.
It's never been challenged.
Never been, no, I guess where I'm coming from is, I'd hate to see the development over there shut out somebody else trying to build a house in another part of town.
If they were, if they were to go, they would, if we get in a situation where we, for whatever reason, we determined we were unsustainable in our growth for that next year, the permits for Woodmont would be in the same pool as everybody else going through the scoring system if we had more permit requests than there were permits available. So, they would be scored the exact same way as any other permit.
I guess I'm more worried about the other people.
Sure, and that's, that's why there's no bonus for them being in a PUD versus a conventional development.
Okay.
Actually, besides our growth management, we have a phasing ordinance.
Correct.
Which limits, you know, fifteen units, I think, for anyone.
Depending on the type of development, there's a variety of different phasing requirements.
There's also an overall cap that's based upon our normal rate of growth.
If we ever exceed more than a two percent increase in our housing stock, there's an automatic stay that will go into effect.
So, it's, it's just really to keep, keep at a normal average, you know, based upon our previous rate of growth and the rate of, and actually, the growth measure ordinance is based upon rate of growth of surrounding towns.
That's by statute, we have to, it has to be a regional analysis.
Debt that we have, and things like that, meeting our capital improvement plan.
Well, the other one that may have an effect on it is the one, around, it's a five there.
Oh.
Decompensation subdivision?
Yeah.
They're gonna be limited to no more than twenty-five permits per year, based on the phasing ordinance.
Keeps a, keeps a good equilibrium. Anyone from the public have any questions, comments, or concerns on the growth management ordinance as presented tonight? Sign none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right.
Tim, I'm curious, how many building permits are in the pipeline currently, or how many have been approved to date this year?
In 2011, I don't have that data. We base our ordinance, our review is based on census data, so when the building permits are done through our department, they're reported to the Census Bureau, and that's, that's where we get the information for all the communities in order to be consistent. Their monthly estimates generally come out about a month or so after the close of the month, so January's permit information probably would be available towards the end of February.
John, why don't you come down to the microphone, please, and just identify yourself for records, name, name, address. And John's gonna be the new school board.
Town manager appointee.
Town manager appointee, you know, which is, agreement the town council has is that town manager appointee comes from the school board.
Thank you very much, John LaFerriere, 331, Mayor of Leonardary. Just a quick question on, I, I know you said that it's what, no, there's no cap, and that's eighty-one.
There'd be, there'd be absolutely no permit. If we, we could issue three hundred permits this year.
Okay.
And as long as we don't exceed a two percent growth in our housing stock from that previous year.
Okay, my question is, what is the two percent? Just, just.
Off the top of my head, it would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety permits.
A hundred and ninety, okay, that, that was just my question. So, you're really looking at probably.
Again, our existing housing stock at the end of the year was, let me get to my big spreadsheet here. Our current end of 2010 housing stock is eight thousand five hundred and thirty-five units, so it would have to grow by two percent of that.
Yeah, probably, I'd say, early to mid 2000s, we were probably around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty permits on an annual basis.
The last time our housing stock grew by more than two percent was 2004. It grew by two point one five percent.
And even with the Woodmont stuff, you don't expect, when that comes up, it's gonna be better than two percent?
Given the pace that we're even getting through the review of that project, I don't expect that we'd even see any construction on any residential on that for probably at least a year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You'll be in George's seat.
That's my seat.
Next meeting.
They keep moving, by the way.
That's just for George, we keep moving around, keep him.
I'm so special. That's exactly where the seat's going.
Did we have a motion on that yet?
No, not yet.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to.
Fine.
Find that the town is not in a condition of unsustainable growth based on the letter from Tim Thompson, town planner, dated February 9th, 2011.
Okay, motion by Dana.
Second.
Second by Rick. Any further discussion by the board? Sign none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extinctions, chair was affirmative, and it's sustainable growth. Okay, moving on here. See, Beal is gonna be next month, March 9th. We have a conceptual discussion, a possible McDonald's restaurant in our MUC sub-district, and this is gonna require a conditional use permit. They had met with us previously, I think we had given them some direction, and hopefully we'll probably just ask the board to approach this with a, an open mind again, and we'll see what they have to offer and what they have done for us, or any recommendations.
Can I ask a question before we get going on it?
Yes.
Related to it? The small area master plans, restaurants except fast food establishments which may be authorized only by special permit, is a special permit and a conditional use permit, the same thing?
Yes. And I think when we were discussing the, you know, the zoning, that we at first wasn't, didn't put in, you know, fast food, but then decided to put it in as a conditional use permit, because there's probably no use for it in that area anyway.
I'm just curious, I was questioning the language of special permit versus a conditional use permit.
Unfortunately, Southern Hampshire Planning Commission used a term that doesn't have any legal bearing in New Hampshire.
Yeah, it didn't mean a thing to me, so that's why I was wondering what it was.
Has to be a conditional use permit.
That's fine. Just as a bit of background for the board, staff did meet with Frank and the folks from McDonald's last month to discuss the previous discussion they had with the board back in December, to go through the conditional use permit criteria. Staff's biggest concern back then was that there was no real attempt to address the conditional use permit criteria, particularly as it relates to pedestrian access. They went back to the drawing board, looked at the surrounding development areas, the potential development of the retail project to the south of this, the park and ride to the north, and the Vista Ridge project, and we believe that they've come up with a concept and pedestrian access plan that gets towards meeting those conditional use permit criteria. So I'll turn it over to Frank, so he can go through what they've done to this point.
Just identify yourselves for our records, please.
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, my name's Attorney Bernard Campbell from the Office of Belmont and Campbell Professional Association in Salem. I'm appearing this evening with Mr. Montiro to join him in the discussion before the board. And I want to thank the board and I want to thank the staff for their comments. As you're aware, I was not present at the last meeting. I have had an opportunity to review the minutes of that last meeting in the discussion, and as Mr. Thompson said, there have been some revisions to the plan as it relates to the pedestrian feature, that's one of the four criteria in the conditional use permit specifically that he had focused on, at least as I gathered from the minutes. My role in this is, I went back and made a review of some of the source documents, one of which was already mentioned here tonight, which is the small area master plan that went through along with the 2004 Lunedary master plan, at least the version that's available online and can be examined. And I just wanted to point out in your mixed-use commercial, there are in fact the four criteria for the conditional use permit. This is a use that's allowable by conditional use permit, and the four criteria that were referenced in the minutes of the last meeting, the primary, there are obviously four of them, and the proposed use is consistent with the general vision statements and recommendations from the Lunedary Northwest Small Area Master Plan, or the most recently adopted town master plan. And I'm not sure if that was a full point of the discussion the last time they were here, or whether the focus was strictly on the last of the criteria. I did go back and, as I said, look at those source documents, and I did note that not only in your master plan, which basically describes this area as a major commercial center, or rapidly becoming in 2004 a major commercial center, probably has not moved as rapidly as we could based on some of the economic factors, which I heard discussed as I was sitting here in the back of the room just a little while ago. But obviously, that area has proceeded. And the Northwest Small Area Plan, which focuses on the idea that this area would become a transportation-oriented development area, basically in the recommendation section of your small area master plan, zoning recommendations that they move toward at least either flexible TOD model ordinance or other appropriate mixed-use flexible zoning, which is essentially what you did in your mixed-use commercial. And it talks about making it available for more, excuse me, more intensive use, higher density clustering and mixed-use land at exit five through appropriate zoning transit-oriented development options. The fast food restaurant, the McDonald's restaurant, the classic restaurant that we all know, is, I think certainly, has an attraction for mixed-use area in an area around exit five. One of the things I did do in the preparation for tonight is I contacted the DOT to find out exactly if they had any figures on how many people were currently using the transportation center, which is obviously right across the street from this. And the most recent figures that I was given by my office is that they're approximately ten, their count is ten thousand per month in using the facility, either in or out. And in conjunction with the improvement plans for pedestrian access, which is on the screen behind you and I assume in front of you as well, that is a major focus of what has come back as a result of the meeting that took place last month, excuse me, in December. We're focusing on the ability, we're looking at that facility that this community has as a transportation facility, and the numbers of people currently patronizing that area and the potential growth of that as a transportation center. And then looking at that population that either arrives or is outgoing at that site, parking in that area, and either waiting for transportation to arrive, or waiting to greet someone to arrive, and looking at what the logical types of uses could be that would fit that plan for that area. And it seems to me at least, and I hope to you, that the type of basically responsive food, fast food restaurant-type use would actually be an ideal fit on that corner for someone to walk across the street with that number of people in that location, and, you know, who knows what's going to happen to rail traffic. I have some interest in rail traffic. I've looked at some of the state reports for the rail corridor from Lawrence to Manchester, and whether or not it would ever go through this area again, or on the old rail bed or something close to it. I only envision this area as increasing as a transportation hub. And the ability to interface basically the fast food restaurant that we're proposing for this location with appropriate pedestrian incentives essentially, and then providing the facilities for pedestrian access to the site, I think has the possibility of serving the community well, and in fact, if there's, we're encouraging the pedestrian use to go across this area, this would be the kind of access in a pedestrian-oriented way that may be more attractive than a lot of other options that could go on that corner for the large number of people who go through the transportation center at any given time. So after looking at your Northwest Small Area Plans, and of course, the Northwest Small Area Plan had, at least as a model to it, an attached ordinance from Massachusetts as a quote "guide," and I looked at that as well, and it had some language in there about the issue of fast food restaurants, indicating that in the appropriate locations, it would fit in with a TOD-type model or a mixed-use model, which is what the community ultimately adopted. The other criteria, granting the application is in the public interest, the property in question is reasonably suited for the use requested. And then the fourth one, which Mr. Thompson had highlighted before, and I think this is where I'm going to ask Frank to spend a little more time, is that the design of the site represents the extent practical, a minimization of impacts to natural resources, and maximizes the provision of green space and accommodation of non-vehicular and pedestrian traffic. What we've done in a design feature is tie into an expected crosswalk that would be a direct access to the transportation center across the street, extending basically a pedestrian sidewalk access in a southerly direction that would eventually extend by the work of others to at least the projected or future retail uses south of this site in two locations, one along the street and one in a specific mid-lot area where it could be created with a direct stairway access, there is a significant slope at the back of the site. And so those features have been designed in, in an effort to make this more in line with the accommodation of non-vehicular and pedestrian traffic as called for in your ordinance. And we appreciate the support of the staff, or at least to reexamine this issue, and their guidance has been helpful. I'm going to ask Frank just to maybe walk through some of the specifics on the modifications to the plans, and then we'll be glad to take your questions.
Sure, thanks Bernie. For the record, Frank Montero with MHF Design in Salem. As Bernie mentioned, we met with staff on January 5th following our last hearing, and took a look at more of a global view of this area. We had a lot of discussion last time about the bus facility and existing pedestrian access, crosswalks and so forth. We really didn't have something to see and relate to. So this composite plan on your screen now, we've taken three different exhibits. We took the design plans for the bus station, combined that with the concept plan for the McDonald's site that we prepared, and we also added in the future retail development that's proposed by the abutted-to-the-rear. That's the actual concept plan that he presented to the planning board previously. Just kind of merged those documents to get an idea of the pedestrian access and the potential for it in this area. It's hard to see on that screen, but on the original, we highlighted in yellow the existing pedestrian link between the bus facility and basically all the way up Vista Ridge to the condominiums. There's an existing sidewalk that the state constructed, and a pedestrian link from the bus station out on 28, which proceeds through the intersection via a crosswalk across 28. There's a small sidewalk ramp at the corner adjacent to the McDonald's there. And then crosswalk again across Vista Ridge Drive to a sidewalk that exists all the way up Vista Ridge Drive to the condominiums to the south. So that existing pedestrian link is available for us to link from. Additionally, the state constructed a pedestrian link over to, along 28, easterly towards Tedeschi, so you can actually walk down to the gas station as well. So in looking how to link all these developments together, if we start in the rear, the retail developer to the rear had looked at pedestrian link to the existing sidewalk on Vista Ridge Drive in yellow, and I've highlighted that in this kind of pink color that would lead to his retail building. So that's kind of what he had planned on a conceptual basis. What we could do, what we offered to do was to tie in the McDonald's use in two directions, one from the bus facility across the street, and one from the rear for this future retail development. So we suggested two possible sidewalk extensions for McDonald's, one on 28 along the frontage there, that we could link to the proposed restaurant, or a second sidewalk extension on Vista Ridge Drive, which I've shown in red there, which would actually link directly to the front entrance to the McDonald's facility, and we could continue that crosswalk up to another future sidewalk that would link the retail development. Staff thought that was a good idea. We talked a little bit more about the sidewalk connection on 28, and the fact that there's probably no development that's going to happen to the east of this lot, because the adjacent lots are wetland, and the developer to the rear is not planning to utilize that either. So staff actually suggested that we don't construct the sidewalk on that link there. We'd be glad to if that's something the board desires, but that's why it's not shown on this latest plan. So we are proposing now to construct a sidewalk extension on Vista Ridge, and that would link pedestrians from the bus facility directly to the McDonald's. We thought that would be a big advantage to someone utilizing the bus facility if they wanted to get a coffee or fast food, instead of getting in the car and driving to Dunkin' Donuts or driving over to Subway, they could simply walk across the street and achieve the same food. And secondarily, to allow pedestrian access from the retail building in the rear to the McDonald's, it's a little more challenging because of the grade difference. As I mentioned, the preliminary grade information that I've seen from the developer in the rear of that large retail building is going to be about twenty feet higher in elevation than Route 28, and about eighteen feet lower than, eighteen feet above our finished floor of our building. So what we propose to do is link the handicap that access aisle and crosswalk to the McDonald's facility to his future sidewalk system in the rear, and we'd be able to achieve that with a stair system, at least up to our property line, we could gain about seven feet in elevation, and then that would continue in some fashion to that retail development in the rear. So the further we slide that connection closer to the retail building, the bigger the grade differential. So we kind of picked something in the middle there that would make it doable from a pedestrian point of view. So we felt with this linkage that we addressed some of the pedestrian concerns that the board had at the last meeting, and I kind of gave a better idea. We also had some discussions about driveways and access, and what this plan also shows is the existing median system that's in 28, I've colored actually in black there to highlight the extent of that raised median whereby we're proposing that right-in-right-out driveway on 28. There was some discussion about maybe that's not a good idea, people potentially turning left in that driveway, and the issue of the subway up the street was brought up, and I did take a look at that, and they do have a restricted driveway there, but there is no raised median to prohibit any turns there, so I could see why some illegal turns are happening there. Clearly, with this median extension and the extent beyond the driveway, there's no ability for cars to turn left at that point, so this is some of the main things I wanted to at least touch on as a result of our last meeting, and that's pretty much where we're at at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Start with John, I'll go through the board, and then...
Again, Frank's correct. Again, staff did meet with him, and we had looked at, or again, Frank had compiled these three plans, and again, we felt that, again, he was addressing the issue regarding pedestrian access to the proposal much clearer, and again, I think it'll help the board understand what's out there, and again, it looked all right for us, to us. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Just echoing John's comments, when we did look at this back in December, there really wasn't a provision anywhere for the sidewalks or pedestrian access, which is why I raised the concern I did back in December. Following the meeting we had back in January, given the plans that are presented here tonight, I feel comfortable recommending with this word to move forward to the board that it would meet those criteria for the conditional use permit.
Thanks to both the board.
I have nothing further to add.
Dana?
Nothing.
They met, you certainly, thank you very much for the work that you did, working with Tim and John. This is the type of business, for me, it's a good spot, plus, I think it provides, if you ask half the kids in town, probably, it's a good place to start your working career. You know, fast food restaurants and that type of thing, so I think it'll present an opportunity for some of our younger folks to get their start and earn some money and add to the tax base that's going to support people like me and you.
That's right. It's a good place, yeah, to learn how to, you know...
How to work. Chuck? Is there any question about the curb cut? Does the state have to approve the curb?
Yes, the state would have to approve the curb cut.
Are they likely to do that on that?
I would assume so. I did not have as big a concern over the driveway on Route 28 as Andre did, as he expressed at the last meeting, given the fact that the median is there. And the other factor that I don't know if Andre considered, we talked about back in January, that he kind of conceded he hadn't thought of, was in terms of delivery vehicles accessing the site, if this was a single driveway access only on Vista Ridge Drive, it'd be very, very tight for a large delivery truck in order to make that turn all the way around the building, so that secondary access to Route 28 is relatively, from my perspective, would be an essential component for the safety of the internal traffic.
I agree, yeah.
But in response to your question though, Chuck, again, ultimately, is DOT's call on that curb cut?
Right.
And we have had some preliminary discussions with the DOT on that, and we feel fairly comfortable that this is workable for them. We understand we still need to do traffic studies and queuing analysis and things like that, but in terms of access and land out the property, we feel comfortable with these locations.
Yeah, and I think the median makes it much, much more workable.
That's really one of the key components from my perspective.
Great idea, yeah.
Which they, our recommendation to the state on 102 by McDonald's was to put a little median in there too, because we do have problems and there are accidents there because of it. Lynn?
Other than the pedestrian access, are there any other changes you made to the plan since the last time we saw it?
No, it's the same layout. We just added the sidewalk systems and the stairway in the rear.
And in your mind, I know it's, you know, just a conceptual discussion, but the red sidewalk, would the tenant be responsible for clearing the snow from the red sidewalk? You know, it's interesting, we have the sidewalk network out there, but nobody's cleaning them, and, you know, talking to Yanis, there's no town mechanism to get them cleaned.
That doesn't do it.
Right, so it's just, you know, it's almost...
Something where you put into the site plan.
And if we could do that, if we had the authority to do that, I think it would be something we should be thinking about, you know, in the future when we do have, do see sidewalks.
Just a comment though, again, Lynn, is again, yeah, so if you require them to maintain the sidewalk along Vista Ridge, then they cross the road, DOT doesn't, you know, just being practical.
It seems like we need to start somewhere, you know, the sidewalk up Vista Ridge, you know, it's a nice sidewalk nine months out of the year, but it's been covered with snow for the last, you know, since December, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we can ask our state representatives to have the DOT do some sidewalk clearing, perhaps, or sidewalks.
You know, if we're trying to make it...
That'll happen, I don't know.
If we're trying to make it pedestrian-friendly, we might as well do it 12 months out of the year, so.
That's all I have.
Okay.
It would seem like it was in the interest of the manager of McDonald's to keep the sidewalk, that sidewalk clean.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep the walkers coming in.
Yes.
I appreciate the work you've done to show this way, I think it's very helpful, at least it's very helpful to me, to see how that would work. It's, I understand it's a tight spot, and maybe this isn't the best use for it, but I would also agree with what Lynn said, anything that we could do to make the sidewalks useful all year round. I was just driving down 28 today in Derry, and there were sidewalks all along there, but, you know, there's this 80-year-old woman pushing a walker down 28, and it's a hazard for her, obviously, but also for the drivers, and it's, that's a very busy place, so, anything we could do to try to help that stay clear, I think, it would be our, it would be good for us to require, not that I'm, you know, anyway, I just think if there's going to be sidewalks, we need to plan for having them useful most of the year.
Yeah, can I just, a question here, so if I'm walking across the street from the bus terminal, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, and I want a coffee, and I want to grab a quick, does that mean I have to go yellow across 28, all the way up the red, all the way around into the parking lot, or you'd have some kind of cut-through into the parking?
No, you'd follow the red, there's a couple, there's a couple issues with going directly, like the shortest route, mostly the topography is one issue, and the second is the detention pond's going to end up in the front there. So, and actually, if you look at a close-up of the building footprint itself, the front door of the facility's on the corner where that red sidewalk comes in, and the drive-thru is facing the road, so we don't want to promote people crossing the drive-thru lane either, so we kind of put those considerations into account when we decide where the best spot would be. So, there is a door on the short side of the building, facing Vista Ridge, near the road, but to get to that, you'd be crossing the drive-thru lane, and be a little more hazardous than walking up and around, in our opinion.
Yeah, these places, I'm sure 28 is going to be, the walk, don't walk signs are operating, and you can get across that way. It's the only way it's going to work. Try to cross one or two, it's, you'll get killed. So, I mean, it's better to have, I'm sure there's going to be people probably walking across all over the place, especially in the summertime, but, I think with the traffic that's out there, you go across where it's signalized.
At what point does the people who control 28, is that the DOT, at what point do they control putting in a pedestrian walkway up and above over the traffic?
It would try to come out of the state, I don't think it'd be, I think expense-wise, it would be, I don't think it would happen, given the, or the lack of money that our DOT has. It's not a part of, and we discussed it also on 102, either something over, or something under, and it's a nice idea, but is, you know, the practicality, something underneath, you know, who could be lurking there that could cause a problem. Overhead, there's definitely a big expense putting it over the road.
One more question, I, if you're done.
Yeah, awesome.
I'm just curious, mainly because people have come to us again and again, and talked about how they have different expectations for what happens up at exit five, than what's going on at exit four, could you just remind me what the signage sort of situation would be for McDonald's in this area?
The signage would be as it would be for any lot that's located in this particular district, you'd be allowed a 10-foot-high monument sign for the freestanding signage, maximum of 65 square feet, and you'd be allowed wall signage per leave, it would be extremely similar to what the 102 McDonald's has in terms of wall signage, but the freestanding...
No 25-foot-high Amazon poles, no?
You cannot go pole, we do not allow any signs higher than 10 feet for freestanding signage.
All right, I'm curious.
Just as another point of information, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes. Go ahead. You go ahead, and I'll get Dana.
Okay, I apologize. If you could just go back to that overview again, Tim, just to point out to the town, that other corner at Sims Drive, that property there, is currently for sale, and we've actually been doing some work on that, so there is a potential to also link that use into this whole overall system, and just so the board knows, whatever use comes in there, could also tie in nicely with what we're trying to do here.
Currently a construction office. Former. Former. Take care, yes.
Looking at this a little closer, and I understand it's a tight lot, there may be nothing you can do about it, but I'm looking at your two handicap spots, so the handicapped come over there, park, and then they have to cross your drive-thru lane to get in and out of the building.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I know how people drive, and I'm afraid that's just an, you know, I'm afraid that's a safety issue, or a potential safety issue. Looking at it, I don't see any other way to do it, but it is a concern.
Yeah, I'm sure Frank can respond, Mr. Coons, but because of basically where the circle goes, there's no place at that building, because we assume the drive-through traffic, for the most part's going to exit the same place they came in, on Vista Ridge, or they're going to make two circles to get back around to, get back around to 28, if that's where they came in. So there's probably no good spot, there's no spot that's not going to be where we're going to have at least one line of that quote "drive-through" traffic, where it's situated now, fortunately, we don't expect it, obviously, the way it's designed, we don't expect it to ever be in the queue area, sufficiently past where the queue would be, and I don't know, Frank, there's really much else we can do.
Well, I mean, the only other location we considered was the side of the building there, closest to Vista Ridge, and...
Yeah, I was looking at that, too.
Yeah, and the concern I have with that, well, it's a couple things, to get there, you're going to be doing a big loop around the building to try to find the handicap parking, but also, people that leave the drive-thru tend to not pay attention, as they're shuffling around for fries or whatever.
I don't like the people coming into it.
Yeah, so, I mean, as you're driving into the facility, you're keenly looking for that entrance to wherever you want to go, and I think it'd be safer where we show it than on the other side, that's my opinion, but I agree, I understand your concern.
Yeah.
If the lot was larger, you know, we could do something different, but we can also, we can talk about that more as we proceed to.
I was almost, you know, I'm almost thinking maybe, it almost looks like there may be, you know, parallel, enough room for a parallel on either side of your walkway there, and you might lose one car out of the queue.
Putting a couple parallel.
You have to have a minimum of 10 in order to meet zone, where they drive your queue.
It was a thought, I...
Yeah, no, we'll consider else.
If there's any, you know, just kind of maybe take a better look, you know, another glance at it.
Yeah, we'll talk to McDonald's about that.
My main concern is someone trying to get across there in a wheelchair, especially in the winter or something like that, is...
Yeah, the other fact is that contribute are the grade of the parking lots, you know, we're limited to a 2% grade, so, it, with the big topo grade between one side of the site and the other, we do have some grades that, well, a lot of grades that exceed 2%, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you're going to be doing a lot of excavating.
Yeah, so it's, there's a lot of factors going to it, but we'll certainly take another look, see if we can...
Yeah, that, yeah, it's just, you know, I, you know, I know how people are coming in to do drive-throughs.
Yeah, there's probably, you know, the markings, the markings on the roadway, and even something upright to try to make drivers cognizant that there's pedestrians around.
Absolutely. I just wanted to make one further comment, we focused on the pedestrian part of that fourth criteria, the other part is open space and natural resources, and I think, given the size of the lot itself, the fact that it's been partially taken by DOT for improvements through 28, they have done the best that they possibly can in terms of meeting that provision of the criteria, so I am still comfortable with that, even though there will be some needed relief in terms of those dimensional requirements that would be the other two conditionally used permit criteria that we'll be talking about when this comes before the board.
I mean, I think this is possible, unusual, and it's probably difficult to get something in there that's good, and this is probably a good use for it, and I think it's workable, you know, it's definitely workable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate that, because, you know, Frank has been in touch with Tim, and we understand the process that you use in terms of approving the conditionally used permit, that basically it's part of the site plan application process, so it's helpful to get at least a sense before we start doing, you know, sending these gentlemen out to spend a lot of time and effort in engineering, that application will come in as part and parcel of the filing request, and so, it's, this conceptual discussion is certainly helpful for us.
Yeah, and I think there's, you know, from just looking at it, there's the color green is, you know, I think it meets the spirit, anyway, of what we're trying to, trying to accomplish, and have something there that's functional and viable for the public use, and also a good return for the tax base.
And again, at a concept level, everything appears to be reasonable, there's obviously still going to be the traffic analysis, the drainage analysis, and everything else we go through as part of any site plan review, but I don't think there's anything, any insurmountable hurdle that I could see in terms of the review of this particular project.
There'll be the heritage commission for the design review signage and so forth.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Any else from the board? Any questions of us?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fitz, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other business to come before the board tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second by George.
Oh, my God. This is your last official act?
See ya! Last official act.
Congratulations.
I won't let my, I won't let the door hit me on the way out.
All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
For adjourn, thank you everyone, turn the computers off, please.
You normally do a full shutdown.